Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the committee of the whole meeting for September nineteen. In attendance this evening, our, our economic development director. Thank you, Zakowski. Trustee Jay Hyferman, Angela Maseras, Community Economic Development Director, Fire Chief Bob Klobowski, our village attorney, Chris Cummings, Village Manager Napoleon Haney, Police Chief Denise McGrath, Trustee Ann Colton, Public Works Director John Schaper, Trustee Vivian Harris Jones, and Assistant Village Manager Tyler Hall. Way back there is our village clerk Marilyn Thomas. Be reminded, this is a work session, no formal action is taken at a committee of the whole meeting. Are there any public comments this evening other than what's on the agenda? If not, the discussion items this evening are downtown speaker extensions, the village hall lighting project, Tivoli Light Extension, and the passageway between the Hartford Building and Lula Bells as far as additional lighting. Mr. Hall? If you would show the proposed project?
So, so Mayor Board and residents, just we have, we've prepared a presentation for you to talk about the agenda items. So we're talking about downtown amenities, right? Everyone knows, I was at Governor State today and I spoke, I had an opportunity to speak with the class and they had members from Orland Park, all over the place, from Willow Brook in this class, everyone knew downtown. Everyone knew downtown because of its downtown, so we're talking about amenities. Downtown amenities, what are they and why do communities invest in them? What are they? Public spaces? Places where people can go and sit and congregate, look at their phone and play Pokemon Go by the masses. Streetscape and beautification, public art, street furniture, these are things that Homewood has in our downtown currently. Cultural and recreation facilities, music, lighting, these are things that make downtown a pop. We're places where you want to go to spend your day and spend your time. And why? Why do you have these amenities in the downtown? Quality of life. Obviously, economic development, we want to draw developers to our community, we want to showcase our downtown, showcase our community. And community identity, you may not want to believe it, but when you go places, you know people know you by your downtown. Everyone knows that our downtown is beautiful, it's gorgeous, it has shops, cultural enrichment, revitalization, community gathering spaces, vibrancy and attractiveness.
Here are a few examples of different amenities from different communities in the region. This is a fountain at Ford Park in their downtown area. Here is Oak Park downtown, obviously dressed up for their, their holiday lights and holiday season. This is downtown Aurora, they have tively lights, nature kind of passageway. And then here is downtown Madison, their fountain square, they have a more comprehensive kind of amenity here. And then here are a few of our existing downtown amenities, we have Martin Square, of course, very popular area, we have a lot of our events. We have fire pit, it's used, it's kind of near the home of Ford, also the Richard Haas murals are present there throughout town. We also have these decorative pools with the hanging flower baskets, great in summer. Hopefully get a few more looks out of the beauty of the hanging baskets in the weeks. Here we have a Homewood Auditorium and a Homewood Science Center, well attended by both the adult community as well as the youth. And then we also have downtown speakers currently and Martin Avenue Tively Lights from Martin Square going south downward to Hickory. So our wall here is the proposed downtown amenity enhancements to be discussed. The downtown speaker expansion is one of those projects currently in the typically 2324 budget, we have thirty thousand dollars of ARPA allocation for this project. We have the Martin Avenue Tively Lights Phase Two expansion, in the budget we have two hundred thousand dollars of ARPA allocated for that project. Then we also have the village hall lighting replacement slash update, in the budget we have about fifty thousand for the ARPA allocation. Then we also have this new passageway that we had realized with the new construction of the Hartford Building, now that was not in the budget, but it will cost approximately ten thousand dollars and we'll be closely using ARPA funding for that as well. All of the downtown amenity enhancement projects account for about eleven point four percent of our total ARPA allocation, including the new passageway part process. So first one is the downtown speaker expansion. So if we look at this map here, the blue kind of things here are the active speakers and where they're located. These are the ones that are actively playing music and then our standard hours of operation. So prior to the board, we talked about this at the board meeting in July, it was able to have a discussion here in Cow. And before that meeting, the hours of operation were nine AM to seven PM, Sunday through Thursday, and then Friday and Saturday, nine AM to nine PM. I believe I might have missed, spoke at that board meeting with different hours, but we clarified these were the hours. And then after that meeting, following feedback from the public, we adjusted those hours. From Sunday through Thursday is eleven AM to five PM, Friday and Saturday is eleven AM to seven PM. Those new hours would be added to this proposed expansion. So like I said, the blue is what's currently playing during these new hours. We had the feedback at that board meeting, we're a lot of residents that lived in this apartment building here in Hickory and Martin. They believe the music's worth too loud, so we made those inactive, but we have them still there for emergency purposes. The speaker kind of have two kind of function, one is to play music and also is the, we can broadcast emergency notification. We have a lot of our events, Fall Fest coming up, whoever attends, is in this area and if needed to, we can present information via those speakers as well. But as of now, those are not actively playing music. The proposed speaker expansion is this footprint here, the yellow pins. It will be going east down Ridge to the coast office and then south down Dixie, sorry, to Olive Road. Though that's the proposed expansion, it's ten additional speakers. And part of that cost for implementation is, one is upgrading the current omnidirectional antenna to a directional one. Currently, the one that's on there is above village hall. If we were to move forward with this, we would relocate that to the edge of the auditorium so it can reach and directly have a line of sight connection almost. We still want the speakers and then in the speakers going down the line. So if we're going to move forward with this project, we would have to put the antennas above the roof of the auditorium. Then we would additionally perfect and weatherize speakers as well. As I mentioned before, this would be have a budget allocation of thirty thousand dollars from ARPA. And then the vendor we would move forward with is Aeronetics, that's our current provider, they have over a hundred and sixty multiple clients, the few in Illinois as well. So that's the downtown speaker expansion project, and we're moving forward with Tively Lights.
Tively Lights, we wanted to put it, we wanted to show a picture, this is from last year Fall Fest, my wife and I walked the downtown. It's like, I think it was like two in the morning, but I wanted to show you Tively Lights, right? They're our current, our phase one, part of our phase one of Tively Lights first. So our first, first phase of Tively Lights, obviously, is from Hickory, it's been installed already, from Hickory to roughly Martin Square. And I'm sure everyone has enjoyed those Tively Lights, if you've come to any of our nighttime events, you see the bright sparkling stars right above you crisscrossing. The goal is to extend those Tively Lights all the way to Chestnut. Obviously, you guys know, this is our, this is our event footprint, from, from all the way from Hickory Road all really to Chestnut. That's where all of our, the majority of our events take place, our farmer's market, Wednesday night market, so we want to extend those Tively Lights. Cost of implementation for, cost of implementation for this, because, and I'm going to let John talk about this, but roughly the budget is two hundred thousand. John can just kind of share how this looks.
So the two hundred thousand, is that just from?
Let him finish his presentation.
Yeah, those Tively Lights, that's, that's the extension, but John's going to talk about why.
Right.
Yeah, the extension would go from Chestnut Road here to where the current Tively Lights are just at the right, right, there is road. There's two different styles that we could look at going with, the current style that's on Martin Avenue from Ridge to in the brick, the brick cave areas, a little bit different style than what is on the south of Ridge. So it's kind of depending on which style we want to go, if we were to move forward with this project, we probably would did a option for that, option one and option two. There is some infrastructure work that has to be done, electrical cable being put underneath the brick sidewalk area. Along both sides of the street, there'd be approximately ten poles added with that. They would hook into the existing electrical cabinets that are there on both sides of Martin Avenue. Replacement of the brick after the found wood is put in or wired to hold and then phase them into the project.
And one of the issues is that materials has gone up significantly over the years and I'm sure that everyone knows that, so we have that budget allocated from ARPA. So, want to talk about village hall lighting, my favorite project, I don't know if you've gone past one eight three 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 Clem Avenue. At night I looked at the house to the, to the east, but that's my house, I love uplighting. So our village hall lighting, that was initially installed in twenty thirteen, right? And that, we, we were, we were ahead of the game. We were installing LED first generation lighting on our, our village hall. And to the right is the controller, what it looked like, and it's antiquated, obviously. That is a stage light controller, it has worked in the past, but that's what we were able to get, but and I'm sure you guys have seen the uplighting at the village hall, it was beautiful. It's some days we could change it to red and green and orange for certain, for certain weeks, breast cancer awareness week. But unfortunately, this system is dying, and actually, half of it has died. And on the right hand, I just wanted to show the control of that kind of antiquated timer that, that most, now the LEDs, you can control it from your cell phone or remote control or computer. But this is, this is our current configuration. So when, when we, when we initially went out and looked at the new LED and new lighting, it was recommended that we should consider downlighting. Instead of uplighting, downlighting, and it does a couple of things, it kind of limits the environmental impact, the, the lighting noise, you know, from the, to, to the around, surrounding buildings, surrounding streets, and it also conforms with updated zoning ordinance. We have a budget for this, roughly fifty thousand dollars of ARPA funding.
And this new project, that kind of came into existence after the construction of the Hartford Building. This new, this passageway didn't exist before, so this is why with the new construction, you now have this passageway, it's kind of an opportunity to kind of create a new amenity, something that's kind of, I don't want to say it's an eyesore, but kind of bare bones, if you just look at it right now, a lot of concrete. And you kind of have a, an artistic, interactive design, and make a destination for people to kind of visit. Staffs have been bouncing around some ideas about what we could potentially put into something like this. This is called a colored rain design, I think the downtown, something similar, a much larger tail, this is important, smaller tail. Maybe we add some lighting to it, but it's a creative opportunity to kind of screw up a, a lot of concrete, it's something that could be a strength of the downtown.
And if you're not sure where that is, the left building is the Hartford Building. We're facing, we're facing directly south, the right building is, I believe, is Lula Bell. So that's the location. If you're standing on Ridge. Facing south.
Okay, Amy, could you explain what ARPA funding is, please, and how much we have to pay for?
Yes, our funding came out of the pandemic, so these are federal dollars allocated to the state. The state that allocated to each municipality, the village of Homewood was awarded just over two point five million dollars. Those funds originally had quite a few restrictions on them as to what they could be used for, but there was a final ruling in twenty twenty-two that basically allowed governments to use the funding, kind of take it as a standard allowance. So we could then take it as like a rather new loss and then use it for a variety of uses. In construction, roads, health services, general government. And police fire, public safety, so you know, we, I think as Tyler mentioned, these amenities are just eleven percent of the total funds that were kind of allocated. We've already spent some of those funds on vehicles, churn out here for the fire department. We've done some upgrades to within public works in the building departments, some I cables that have helped with efficiencies and plans. Water main at Lincoln Avenue and Metro Park, the curb enhancement over there, next super group that's under there to come. So we, you know, we still have about one point two million dollars, but we have our recommendations for what those funds could be used for.
And they all qualify? You've all heard me say before, the downtown amenities are essential. And to reiterate what I've said in the past, that includes seating and benches, which Mr. Haney has spoken of earlier. Public gathering places, water features and fire pit. By the way, we do have water features there, if you'll notice, there's a fountain on each side at Martin and Ridge. Those were not paid for by the village. The one on the west side was paid for by Dr. Claude Gendreau from Lavout, and I paid for the one by the skate shop. And he and I always get on one another which one's working and which one isn't. We, we foster restaurants in our downtown, additional lighting. One of the things I'd like to see, and that's with the Homewood Business Association, stores open on the evening and the weekends. So customers could really rely on stores being open on a regular basis, as are the stores on Halsted Street. Trees and landscaping, the Hartford Buildings just had new landscaping put in along Martin Avenue and on Ridge Road. Art and murals, we emphasize those, music and also when necessary decorative fencing. So those are some of the amenities that are talked about in the downtown. I get a lot of business magazines, this is the latest, the shopping center business, and what do they talk about? Getting back to the basics of a downtown. And it's all of these amenities that towns should be doing and are doing. With that, I'll open this up for discussion amongst the trustees and then we'll take public comments. Well, let's start off with trustee Hyferman.
When we did the original Martin Square project, it was assumed that it was a wild thing and was a lot of of the stuff from opposition and, and I have to say, it was kind of a sport. And I have no regrets, when I look back at some of the things that we did and some of the things that we do in the future, and they, these are what generations who will still be around, but this board is not. And it's important to, individually, you got the speaker project. It's great, I, I hear once in a while, I hear people who go drop to it, I have friends who live in the midst of it and, and are not happy about it, but I also hear lots of people that just, and who we enjoy it and and so I have no problem with it, Tively Lights seem like an expensive project, at the same time, if we don't do it, it'll never be there. And we'll enjoy them for years to come, it's been the existence of life. The past Tively Lighting Project, I'd like to go more about it, I'd like to go more about it, more because I'd like to be part of the board's chosen and not go there. Like seeing release on even cool, it's a cool passive way that I know Mayor Hopeville sort of like, why not have this, we've never released two areas. And so that's, that's my thought, but I do want to, and this is an opportunity for me to to add, you know, our investment in, in, in downtown amenities and in the thousands to encourage, promote and, and fiber downtown. Would like to see, and, and I'd like to see the property owners, the business owners, renters. I'd like to see a more uniform pride in the ownership of those businesses and those buildings by having, you know, regular clean windows, sweeping daily, blue glass meeting in front of those buildings. So I'd like to see the village find good ways to encourage downtown businesses to take that age old concept, pride and ownership, and individual building by building, if every building paid attention. You know, really nice downtown.
Trustee Colton.
I've got a few questions and just sort of clarifications before we can, because I mean, what I'm hoping to do tonight is to be able to open this up into a dialogue where we can all sort of, if it is not just going to be us giving our series of speeches and whatever, I would like this to be more of a, of a conversation. Because I think that this particularly, we want to talk about downtown amenities. Um, you know, this is all of our downtown, you know, this is something that we all share and we all work in and everybody's opinion, nobody's opinion is more important than anybody else's. So thank you, everybody, for coming out, I really want to hear it from you tonight. First question I have, Mr. Haney, is because we're talking about a lot of stuff, you know, downtown, like, oh, we've got these sort of things, but then we're also like putting in apartments and we're putting in different things, we've got a lot, and it's exciting. There's some really, you know, I'm excited to see what happens to Hartford Building, we're talking about next door, maybe getting a performing arts center. Are we looking at this as a sort of systems thing, you know what I mean, like are we like are we doing urban planning, are we doing, are we thinking about this sort of in the big picture? Because I want to make sure that our decisions are smart ones based on the work that we do in Martin Square, is that, and how's that going to impact the performing arts center and how's that going to impact if we do something over here in the village hall parking lot? What are we doing at the village level to, you know, plan for that?
I'm going to defer by, by different, yeah.
We are actually currently in the middle of a downtown master plan. We, we have a plan from two thousand and five that does, that does kind of this area that we're talking about, it puts it at, it labels it as central downtown. And some of these items such as the Tively Lights, Martin Square are part of that plan. This plan is building off of that and an update to it, and so right now we are, we are taking input. We've done a existing conditions study, which is on the website, and actually, the team will be here on Saturday to get input from residents at the Fall Fest. So yeah, we are in the middle of updating that.
And who's the team, you say the team, who's that?
That is RTA, the Regional Transportation Authority, because it goes to transit oriented the concept. And then a consultant called News Consulting, Consultant, they are a planning consultant and then staff.
Nice, nice.
And we have a steering committee of residents and business owners.
Cool, cool, how did you, how did we pick those steering committees?
We actually had people self nominate.
Okay.
And we had forty-five applicants and we chose quite a few, we actually also do focus groups where we put it out to the community to get involved.
Excellent, actually, that's one of the pieces that I want to make sure is there, that especially with like the business owners, you know, I want to make sure that they're a big, everybody, so, I mean, we talked to the Homewood Business Association?
Yes.
Outstanding. Outstanding. Okay, um, my next question is about the Tively Lights, because, boy, that's a lot of money, like I love the look of them, I love the idea. But we put in, and I wasn't on the board with the other ones, how much did we spend on that? On the south, the, the, the ones that we have in right now, was it that much money?
I can tell you, we looked at doing this project about five years ago, five or six years ago. And at that time, we had a cost and that was just the normal style pole, it's basically a flight pole, we have South Ridge Road.
Right.
And that cost was ninety-nine thousand, seven fifty dollars five years ago.
Okay, and how many, how far did we, like, is there like a block of it or how?
We actually checked with it from, from Ridge to Chestnut.
From Ridge?
The same.
Oh, the same thing, it's doubled.
Well, it's, and that's, we budgeted, so we, we have the opportunity to determine if you want to use that same style pole or if you want to go with the updated pole that is on currently on Martin between Ridge and Chestnut. There are two different styles, if you ever noticed it, the bases are bigger, the pole a little bit bigger, it's a different pattern that goes across. Say if that will defeat your pole. So there's, there's some flexibility there, but you know, it's still going to require some underground electricity and part of that we're also looking at because of the farmer's markets and the other events that we have here, they have underground piping throughout the, the block. And then that way, it helps for future events and everything else.
Sure, so we'll be able to, whatever we build, we'll be able to expand into whatever else we do. Is there a benefit between, like in terms of just durability or longevity between the two styles, or are we talking strictly cosmetic?
It's pretty much cosmetic, the pattern, based on how much cabling lights, if we have these smaller poles, we may not be able to do that same pattern that we currently have.
Okay, it's costing.
Yeah.
The first, the first big picture.
You can see, well, yeah, you can see it was crisscross, and the other one is actually a, there's a square part of the box with a cross hatching between. Which requires more, there's more tension on the poles.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And you can see the, the base on these poles are much different. And the size of it compared to the base on that pole.
Okay, but it's more just in terms of which, like, it's how do we want the thing to look? No matter what we put up, it'll still be.
Yeah, and, and, yeah.
Like, I mean, how the same longevity, it's not like one will be a ten years thing and the other will be. Okay, all right.
And one of the questions, pardon my ignorance, but I have absolutely no idea what the difference between upload, uplighting and downlighting are. If you could just give me like a quick explanation.
Tyler, go like, so up, I wish I could pull up a picture of my home in one eight three three Clem. So, I love, I installed myself, I did not, I did it myself. So, so uplighting is the light that comes from below, right? It shines upward, right? You put lights on the side of the building, like the, the antiquated ones we have right now in the village hall, and they shine up. The downlighting, now they're going to be on the top of the building, shining down, like the sun, come on, like the sun, yes.
And we'll be able to do the same, because I, I remember, oh, yes, in two thousand and thirteen, because that was like the height of technology.
It was.
And we were limited, Anne, as to the colors that we can have. The newer lighting gives them a better spectrum.
Yeah, so, so the new lights, you can do, I mean, these things can do everything except saying, they can, different color scheme, they can pulse, they can change timing, they can do a lot, they can do a lot more. So we, we want to Taj Mahal in the village.
So we're going to like, like flat out go run into village?
And, and, and the village hall, this is a one-off building, I mean, this is our, talk about downtown amenities, that village hall, when you get off the train, the first thing you see is the water tower, village hall.
Yeah.
So it's, it's our, it's our showcase in our downtown, so if we could, you know, light it up.
Trustee Harris.
Okay. Our downtown is the gem of our community. A lot of people who come to Homewood to spend their money, come to their festivals. If you talk to other people, residents of other communities, they're always Homewood, Homewood. Homewood has this, Homewood has that, we're getting a new metrics station. We're trying to bring our young families to the community, to spend their money in our downtown as opposed to going to downtown Chicago. We're trying to have a future for our young people down here. So we're trying to enhance the community, keep the money here, to bring the young families here. They love Homewood, they love it, they went off to college, they come back, they're breaking their families, they want us to follow this. This is the new millennium that's trying to come into our community and to pay their tax dollars, keep their property up. We're trying to enhance our community, so these things that are, are being proposed, we're only enhancing our community. Not deter from our community, I know a lot of people may be against some of the things that are occurring, but the future of our community is right here for our young people and the people that are currently here.
I would like to welcome some members of our economic development committee who are here this evening, our chair, Terry Keir is in the back. Phil Mason, Craig Schmidt, Maggie O'Briens over in the corner, so thank you for being here as well. Comments or questions from anyone in the audience?
Sure. Hi, Joey, I've been here in Homewood for about seventeen years. Just a question, I'm familiar with ESSER funds, as the potential of a school ring, but ARPA funds, and I came a little bit late because I was teaching. By a thought that you went over, are ARPA funds, use it or lose it, do they dry up? I know they're allocated to certain things, if you can go into how ARPA funds are.
Amy?
So for the village, we are obligated, we have to allocate the dollars by the end of twenty twenty-four, I have to spend on by the end of twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
And these are one-time dollars, these are not sustainable dollars, one time.
It is, I guess, okay, I'm sure it was the same, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? In the back, Amy?
So, first question somewhat related. Can the funds, I mean, are they, are they restricted in any way?
Um, after the ruling in twenty twenty-two, they really aren't. We can recognize them as, as, as like I mentioned before, a standard allowance and then they really, government services include any service provided by the government, I mean, it's really open ended, it's a plus.
They really, government services include any service provided by the government. Um, I mean, it's really open-ended, it's a plus, multiple use of the category of the fund. So there really are no restrictions.
So I was specifically wondering about facilities. Uh, can you use for a facility improvement?
Oh, yes. Yes.
So that could include the, um, building, just the, um, the science center annex, I believe is what we're calling.
That is.
So, some of the improvements in the science center right now, we're working on a sprinkler system. Uh, they're coming out of the general fund, which in turn offsets some of the spending from ARCA. So it, it works hand in hand.
And, and also Amy, we've invested, we're, we're, so don't think because we're, we're showing this, we have committed to investing capital dollars into the annex. We've allocated our, our current budget over roughly three hundred thousand dollars. Roof repair, tuck pointing, the back door was, was replaced. So we are, we are consistently investing in our, in our, in our facilities in the downtown.
Which is amazing. I'm so grateful to the village's support of Homewood's science centers.
Absolutely.
You know, it would not exist without village support. I was just curious about if that were a possibility for, for this funding. Um, and then I just have a comment. Um, firstly, first of all, thank you for holding this meeting. I really appreciate the chance for community input. And I appreciate too, the fact that you paused on the lighting project after getting input from community members, um, earlier in the year. And I want to thank, um, my fellow residents who showed up at the previous meeting to, um, speak out against that project. And I'd like to add my voice to theirs. Um, I am, I agree, the downtown is an absolute gem. I am down there. Almost every day, um, often multiple times a day. I mean, coffee at Redbird, except for Mondays when she closes, I'd coffee at Starbucks. Um, lunch downtown frequently. Um, I commute into the city once a week, so I am frequently, frequently, frequently on the sidewalk. I can wait for the Hartford sidewalk to be open. And I don't enjoy the music when I'm walking through there. I, it, um, you know, to have a, a low fidelity playlist that you can't. Select the music, it, it adds a, a music deal to the downtown that I don't think exists in that area. And I wouldn't be disappointed to see it expanded. I think the speaker system is a lot of fun for. The events, special events, and certainly as, you know, a learning system, terrific for that. Um, but I hope that. You really consider the people who live downtown. I wouldn't like to have it outside my window all day long. Um, when I was working at the science center, during the pandemic, children were in the buildings at times. It was quiet. But I couldn't work on the downstairs level because of the speaker outside just murmuring away. That was private, concentrated. So. I do agree, um, I'm village amenities downtown, um, big fan, but I would like you to reconsider the speaker project.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Linda Prosha, um. If I had a yes, could you just go to slide ten?
Linda looks into downtown.
Downtown, one more. Yeah, picture right there, Redmond Park.
It's her house.
With the speakers. That is my apartment. I listen to this music. That's, I did notice that the hours have changed now, which I appreciate. Um, since the pandemic, a lot of people now are working from home. We often have meetings. Um, so it becomes very challenging trying not to listen to that music. Obviously, it's a, it's an old, that building's about a hundred years old. The windows are not super thick, so I hear the music no matter what. Um, trying to listen to my own music or even watching TV in the evening. It's a real challenge and especially when you want the nice weather and the breezes coming in, makes it near impossible. Um. I wouldn't be the least bit disappointed if the speakers went away. Um, I understand the thought behind it and enhancing the downtown area, but, um. If there is a way that you could survey or poll all the people that are directly impacted by this, I think you'd find. Um, most likely a difference of opinion as far as other people have talked to residents that think the music is great. Not so great when you live right under it. And I'm not only impacted by the speakers, but there are other village events because my only. Exit is the parking lot right here up in down Martin. So I am greatly impacted, um, every Saturday when we have the farmer's market. And when there are other events. And I know that the village usually will notify me and they've been gracious enough to provide me a, a street, off-street parking spot. Um, by, uh, science center. So that's greatly appreciated as well. I'm not for the speakers. Thank you.
Okay.
Have you seen the alternative speaker solutions? I mean, why do we have to put them in the air? There's speakers that are playing ladders and stuff. It'd be. Enhancing the, you know, visually enhancing, yeah. I mean, if you're broadcasting music, you're broadcasting directly into the apartments. I couldn't even simply put it at ground level, then reduce the, it doesn't need to be that high in the air. But I can never take an entire. Uh, sweeping and changing for the whole system, but it doesn't seem to be working. There's enough people in town that don't really appreciate it, so.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Good idea, John. Is that practical?
I think one of, one of the issues we didn't find out, did some research on it, but the, uh, reason they're up in the air is because of the communication signal. That's all, uh, the, that's everything. So if they're. In-ground, you know.
It's a wire.
It may be a wire and I'm not sure unless you, you know, there's some way to.
I think it would be.
Uh, that is somewhere, you know, that, that would be the issue. But we have to.
We can look at it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Chris?
Thank you, Mary. Uh, my name is Chris King-Handen. I live in South East subdivision, although I did live here downtown in Gastro House. Um, thank you very much for the opportunity to be part of this meeting. I needed a point of clarification, please, on the footprint of the proposed from the September village manager hall, please. Did you say that, um, the farthest this is going to go was Dixie Highway and Olive Road that grassed around you? Okay, so then for a second point of clarification, that would be near the site of the former St. Paul Community Church?
I need to.
I want to make sure, uh, I'm, I'm hopeful that, that the village has reached out to a stakeholder there. Particularly with, um, the services that are held in that facility. And then by extension, we do have a funeral home that is one half block down the street. From the southernmost point of this that perhaps we need to be mindful of because of the types of business, business that both of those organizations engage in.
Absolutely. We do have a ability to select which speaker can be turned off at certain times. Either on a standard hour or these, some of these hour, we get a check with the farmer's market, the fly, you say, he takes out the speakers offline. Uh, so we do have a cavity with this solution. We have to, uh, turn off certain speakers at certain times.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carol and I'm a downtown apartment holder, right on Ridge Road near Torrey or Dixie. And currently I have two speakers across the street, which broadcast music into my front room, windows closed. It's ever-present. It's inescapable. Without pause for hours on end. To the left of me at twenty eleven, Ridge Road are two additional speakers on my side of the street. I want to give you the, the real nitty-gritty here about the downtown residents. Now everyone's excited about the new apartment building, the next door in building, okay? People are going to call that home. And when they come home, they want peace and quiet. For some reason tonight, the speakers are not working on my street and it's the first time in a long time that I've been able to walk into my home and just take a breath. And it's intrusive. It's loud, it's poorly modulated. It rises above the traffic at the busy intersection of Ridge and Dixie. I would not recommend expanding speakers that are going to be broadcasting music into people's homes, uninvited. Special occasions, maybe the Christmas shopping season, playing Christmas cheer. I get that. You know, you have special events where. All of retailers are open later at night and, you know, everyone converge at night downtown. But this is seven days a week, all day long. And like this, uh, derivative comment here. Um, I work from home a couple days a week full-time and I, I'm confined to my living room all day. Where I have this constant input of these, this music that I can't turn down. If my boss called me, I, it's a little embarrassing because I can't modulate my background without leaving the room. And if I leave the room, I don't have wifi and I can't look at my computer. So I mean, the reality is living with this seven days a week. It's not a treat, okay, for the residents. It might be a treat for people coming downtown. They, they come downtown, they do their business and they leave. They take care of their errands and their guests and I have a bird's eye view and they leave, but we can't get away from them. So I, I would really, um, think that. You know, these new people coming in here are, they're gonna be a bit dismayed when they realize that they can't, that they can't enjoy their, their premises quietly.
Thank you for your well-thought comments. I appreciate it.
Oh, thank you and I really appreciate you receiving them. Thank you.
Is there anyone else with, yes, sir, in the back?
Yeah, um, I was gonna ask, maybe thirty thousand dollars amidst all the tens of thousands of dollars that you earmarked with it, like a drop in the bucket. Um, clearly you can tell everyone's really direct about more speakers, but if you didn't spend that, this is more of a procedural question as opposed. Since the money itself can go towards almost anything, um, is there a better way to poll the community? With other options instead of expanding? Let's say you decide not to get the speakers, what else we might be able to do with that money instead? Uh, and I was also curious, aside from that, um, with, has there been any, um. Studying on the costs, like I assume licensed speakers don't run on magic, so does that affect anything, like just for the sound budget and all? Should we add all of these things?
It, it's miniscule. It, it's, but your point's well taken. Perhaps benches or, uh, other amenities in the downtown could be applied. We, we can look at that as well. Thank you. Linda, sorry, only one. No, I'm kidding.
Linda Prosha again. I, it, it occurs to me as you were saying that, that I thought if the thirty thousand dollars wasn't spent on speakers and, and you're talking about increasing lighting, um. Whatever, I forget what it's called. Anyway, um, the lighting, would there be additional like security cameras to enter out? Cause I can see that passageway. Being not a great safer and even right where I live here on Martin, because my entrance, even though my address is right here, my only entrance is right here on Martin. I cannot tell you the number of things I see and hear that are, could be considered criminal and or potential. For, um, a lack of safety. I finally got my landlord to put in security gates. Behind between our building, which is the space shop, Mary's Health Hut, and the, um, Goodman's Insurance Company. Uh, cause there used to be people climbing up there all the time, jumping down the road over the, I think it's part of the science center now, which used to be the, um, Taekwondo school. And, uh, it's just like, ooh, and then right in the day, come up the wood stairs, which are my backpack. So, um, and just this past Saturday, I walked out and there was a bag sitting across from my doorway entry. And I came back home after shopping and it was still there. I thought, well, let me see what's in here. A six pack of canned beer. So two of them had been opened, so I dutifully took them, opened them up, threw them in the dumpster. But just the thought to put in more security cameras, I don't know if it's an issue typically, but, and I do see people, cause where I live across the street, like Love Picking's, um, store. Um, the south side of, um, Ridge. Uh, that people have climbed up their back stairs and crawled around. And I thought, I might call the police a couple of times, but, um. People are like looking in through their windows and I'm like, you know, with all the shootings and stuff and around me, you're. Like, it freaks me out. So it's like the night, I call the police as well, but you know, as far as security.
To answer your question, chief, security cameras in the downtown?
Uh, yeah, we're, we're always reevaluating that and looking at different options and, um, you know, security cameras come with quite a hefty cost. Because it's not just the cost for the camera, it's the software and all the annual subscriptions and that. But yes, it's always something we're looking at and, and looking for weight upon that as well.
We do have Apple cameras in the downtown.
Yes, yes.
And the passageway as well?
Correct. Two cameras, one on the south end of the, the alley and one on the north end.
See it in the one.
Yeah, so another one at the end. And what, what Tyler, what we didn't share is that, uh, not only are we planning on having some type of artistic, it's going to be lit. We, it's more lighting. It already has canned lighting on the side. We're talking about.
Excuse me, well, yeah, night and stage and like, and so the mornings, the daytime, you were gonna say, so it's not just down like till midnight or one AM.
Well, you, you mentioned that, you mentioned the point of safety for that, for that passageway. We want that passageway, one, to be visible. We want it to be well-lit and we want it to be an amenity. So yes, we would, we would have those LED lights on in that alley. So people could feel extremely safe when they, when they trans, trans, uh, what's the word? Go through that alleyway.
In the old days, we said gangway. We can't say that anymore. It's passageway now. And, and any other comments from anyone?
Sure.
Here, John.
Um. You probably all know I, uh, how I feel about the speakers from, uh, the, uh, the previous, uh, board of trustees meeting. But, uh, I, I just wanted to make a couple of, two points, um, in addition to that, that, um, most of the amenities, as you call them, are not objectionable. They're, um, you know, they're perfectly fine and everything and they do, you know, I like the last thing. Sorry, I wasn't here for the presentation. I was unavoidably. Belated, but, um, as I remember, uh, we talked about mountains and, uh. Uh, the Tivoli lighting and also, um, the murals. And, uh, I think you talked about fire pits. And benches, I, I can generally, the Mark Square area would fit into that area. But, uh, I think one of the things is that those other types of engagements are, um, what you would call. Co-engagements, which is to say that, uh, the engagement is optional and invitational. People are invited to sit down. They're invited to, uh, socialize with people or to look at, uh, a, a piece of art or something like that. The problem with the speakers is that they're way over the other scale. And they are a strong push engagement, which is to say it's forced upon people. It's not optional. You can't control it. The programming is, you know, a subject of taste and the volume and, you know, a, all these things. Uh, so I think part of the problem, you know, you, we can call those an amenity because they might be useful for special events. Or, for a short time, Christmas time, or the holidays, you know, whatever, I'm, I'm open to. Uh, whatever people want to listen to around that time, uh, within reason. Um, but I think. When you have these speakers, it's like, when, when you, all you have is a speaker, when all you have is a nail. Uh, when all you have is a hammer, everything looks like a nail. And so we're getting, um. The announcements, I don't know what they are exactly. I've heard your voice, uh, I think it's a test of an emergency notification system or something. Um, they're being used for live music at the, um, various festivals and things, which actually I think takes away from the live music. And also these types of people are often times, you know, there's commerce going on, people are talking, socializing and stuff. They can go over and listen to the music in the music area. They don't need to hear it in all parts of the festival or something. By the same token. Um, you know, we talk a lot about residences and maybe businesses, I think downtown are much more interested in. You know, might feel more positive about the music. Anything can bring more people down, make places more attractive and everything. But the fact is. Businesses all can control their internal environments however they want to. And, um, as, uh, as residents, we are, are much more sensitive to that. We really want to control our environment at the time we're at home. Or even when we're working at home, as other people pointed out. So. I think what this really comes down to is, and I'll, I'll restate what I said before, I don't think the village has any business, um, broadcasting music. Or adults who can make their own choices of media they would like to, um. Or adults who can make their own choices of media they would like to um, consume. I, I think it's a misguided idea that somehow this is an amenity or this attracts people, if you think.
Could you, could you, could you summarize it?
Yeah. Uh, well, this is not the conversation, is it? And I'm going to stay very long, so let me finish my idea, please. Um. I think if you really think that this is an attractive thing for young people, you're really fooling yourself. This is not gonna bring people down. Also, many times. Throughout these years, we've had these speakers, I go down and I'm walking on the street, could play. And even, there's nobody there. Your only, your only audience. Is the people who uh, live in the neighborhood and also. The people walking back to their cars for five minutes after they've been at the bar or to a restaurant or something. So I strongly urge you to reconsider strongly how these speakers are used, where they're placed. And um. Also, I think, you, you know, you've spoken with a couple times about research and. People we've talked to and stuff, there, I haven't seen any evidence of a disciplined um. Research involving open-ended questions, um, categorization of people listed, type of. User they are, are they a Western or are they immediate area, are they just visiting, that kind of thing, so. I would like you guys to consider those aspects in your political initiatives on this.
Anyone else who would like to make comments? Yes, ma'am.
Well, one thing to your point, my kids actually get more of a kick out of the music because they don't enjoy it because they think it's funny. But I would just bear that, I mean, they love our downtown, so they don't like the music, but the tively lights. The fact that I have a thirteen and like an eighteen year old and they really will come home and talk about the lights. The music, they think is silly, you know, so they agree with you, but the tively lights, they talk, they say. They, they want to live in it, they want that when they're gonna grow up. They love the lights. But I'm questioning about it, because when we're talking about. I've missed a lot of meetings, I'm not pretty, I'm not good at development, but I do hope our businesses. And I want them to be successful. And I've been there, I've talked to the ladies, right, for my age, I'm going by, like, my natural laundry soap. And when I've been there, they were talking about just to, if they wanted to decorate their tree outside the Christmas lights. During the holidays, they can't because of the infrastructure to do that. So what I'm hearing is we're bringing tively lights up to the village hall that's closed, right, at five o'clock. But we're not doing anything. That would support the businesses that we want to be open later. I, so I may have missed stuff, so it's kind of funny. My kids love the tivity, but. I just want to say they love those, so I want to understand how bringing it to the village. And not getting it to those, like getting the pretty grass. Trees. Those two village owners, I was in there a different day. And they were like. Talking about wanting to do that. They're like, how do we make that work? And I was like, well, you really can't, we don't have this amount. Um, what about solar lights? You know, we're getting into conversations. Because we all know, right, you go to downtown areas and have their trees lit up, right, when libraries are doing here. My kids miss that. They're like, it's beautiful. So I guess that's why I was just hoping to understand, like, what bringing the lights to the village? Because nothing happens here after you all go home, right? There's like a couple, you know, roller derby and. Like basketball games and those people are here because they want to have kids, you know. So that's why if I could just. And I missed where this all happened, I apologize for bringing it up, but. You know, just kind of understanding.
It's to extend the pattern down mark. For the events as well as the farmer's market, anything else, not just for the village hall. It's to extend the corridor. And as far as your point as to the downtown merchants and what the village does for. Uh, I have a list of the various things that we do. We shovel their sidewalks. We, we, we have all these things we do, we have the hanging baskets. So it's incumbent upon the merchants too, to take a step forward. I'd be delighted when we shovel the sidewalks. If the merchants would put a little pathway between the curb and the street so that the people who park there have, can traverse it.
But back to like, here's the thing, I'm the farmer. You keep, I mean, my cousin, I'm like, okay, the farmer's market, the Wednesday night farmer's market is a park. We, it's not a farm.
A gathering point.
Gathering, but to bring it to the, people don't pay out for the village hall. And if you want to increase business, why are we coming, why are we bringing the food back here? I'm just, I don't, that doesn't, like, the logic is, I'm lost. In that. But I a hundred percent agree with this village business, lots of stuff, wonderful stuff, and I will a hundred percent make sure I care about the business owner. I believe in everybody working together. Times are tough. But I just not, I'm still not getting, why are bringing the tively lights here? To the, I mean, the footprint of farmer's market is the Wednesday night and that's gonna end what?
It ends.
Right, so I guess I'm, that's my only comment, for like, when you're considering where it's gonna go. If, I'm not seeing a real good logic in that.
Well, I think that's something too that we'll be able to bring through when um, Angela meets with the uh. People for the master plan, you know what I mean? Like, I think that's a really, really good point. I think that's something to say, because I mean, there is something to be said for the idea of activating different, like, if you activate a certain part of a community. That can sort of spur things to happen, so. There may be some of that. I just, I think it'd be interesting to bring that in and have that. Also, the possibility of this becoming, I, I just want to say, one of the reasons that I'm supporting the. The, the tively lights, I'm gonna, I mean, we need to talk about them plenty because we've got it so much, but. I do like the idea because if we're talking about turning this into a uh.
Performance thing?
Yeah, you know, and then we've got a science center across, like, I could see like us doing some kind of a skiing class on, because then I'm in the arts and. Whatever, and so I, I do think that there, but I think you're making a really good point that we just need to sort of bear that in mind as we're working on the master plan, so.
That helps, I, I get it. But when is that gonna happen? You know what I mean, like, to, to, to build something for what might be here in twenty. Twenty eight.
Right, well. Apartment that minds funding as well, so that's why I answered.
And, and, and you, you, so, so like, like you, you have it in your mind, businesses, tively lights. So we're saying that we have an event footprint in our downtown, right? You agree. We have a current event footprint, right? It, it runs along.
People eat and you know what? They almost throw your boy, the little child, I mean, we all cut through a little bit. You know what I mean? We're not paying out when you're drinking. It stops right at the booth. And if you're a business, right, and you're open, you want to be open on weekends. When the, when the little bell's open. Now, this is not asking, the little bell is not, like, somebody was dining by the lake, so it goes. But if I'm gonna walk over there, I'd rather see the, the lights are gonna draw me that way. I don't need to be drawn to the village that is closed.
Well, you missed, I think you're missing that point. I think trustee Colton nailed it. We have plans. I know it may seem like we don't. But we have plans, we, we have, the mayor has, believe it or not, allocated, appropriated roughly two point one million dollars for this science center. We're trying to fight the state to get this money, so. Did I say science center?
You did.
We have a science center too, so I was right. But the performing arts center, so it's, we need to extend this. The reason why we don't see people on Chestnut partying, because we don't have anything here to draw them. Right? The tively lights will be that added amenity to extend that footprint. You may never agree, but I think, but, but I think. That's the purpose of the tivity lights, to extend that footprint, to make it more marketable, to make it more festive, festive, so. Absolutely. I appreciate that. See you this Saturday.
Thank you.
Right. All right, any other? Someone back there?
Hi, Maggie O'Brien. Um, so I was, you know, born and grew up here, eventually moved over to Clockmark and then. Your part really spoke to me because I went away to school, I moved out of state, my family has moved away, they're in Frankfurt, they're in Claret and Hells. But when I came back, I picked Homewood and downtown was a huge part of me picking Homewood because. It's very attractive to a person my age, it has everything I want and still has that home feel. It still feels like this is a good, safe community. Where I can also have fun and have all of these places for businesses. And I see the emotion and I hear the emotion about the music, so I want to be respectful with that, but. Hey, I do come downtown more often and I do think I spend more money. I love the music. I love coming downtown. I wish the businesses. Had more extended hours. I specifically spend a lot of money on, well, because they're open on Sundays and I can do that now. But there have been days where I've gone to the little bell for one thing. I'm in such a good mood. And I would be interested in the science of music on me spending money because I go in such a good mood for one thing. Two hundred dollars later, like, I want to eat some toppings when I go down to Piggies. That's a good real example. And then I spent a hundred dollars at Piggies and I bought three shirts, pants, and a sweater and earrings that I didn't need. But then like, a young person, a homeowner that, you know, I don't touch kids, I have that income, I can spend my money, I want to come downtown, I want to enjoy the space. Homewood does provide that and I do think that the lights are part of that. I think that. Whether we like it or not, I do think with this younger population, social media is a huge thing and when we saw the pictures. I can picture that on somebody's Instagram, I can picture that on somebody's Facebook and that makes me think, that's a cool event. I think I want to check that out and so more young people come in. So I do just kind of want to voice that from the younger person that came back here. I see it as a good investment in money because I think people are going to want to come here and come to our events and spend their money in our downtown. So I think.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead, Jody.
Hey, it's Jody Bookright. Um, I came because I read. In the last paper, it's something about the residents and downtown homework. And their experience um, during daytime and the night time, having the music. Um, I don't live in downtown, but my own quality, I must admit greatly. Because I forget home and I don't think the rest of me being able to walk the services. I live near a local law course and they start rining their grass at five thirty in the morning. And I think that we can get that one reason that people live in the suburbs is for peace. I'm considering moving to the city because there's no noise here. Um, and um, I just really, really feel for the people who thought it would really be great to live downtown because we've promoted. You know, the workspaces down here, we built this new place. And I believe that people should have the option of having their windows open. I'm personally, it's always cold, there's like snow. Time in the mirror where I can put my windows open and I love it, I love seeing my windows open. And now I can't anymore. I can't. And that's heated lots, it's also increased my own energy bill. Because I have it in a circular in here now. So it's, it's been really hard for me and I do not live near the downtown. Um, I think we forget about the sound. Can be vulnerable, but it also can be extremely annoying. And um, so for those of you who identify, I think are because, because I think that they should have a right. To listen to what they want and I think they have a right to peace and quiet. And I agree with the people who said it's nice during events. Um, but I don't, you know, I think when you get an apartment downtown, you know that you're gonna hear the train. You know that there's gonna be cars, you're above a restaurant, that kind of thing, so you know those things. But I don't think that they are going to put speakers.
Thank you. Wrapping it up, anyone else? If not, anyone up at the table? We'll take your comments under advisement. Those matters will be coming before the board and you'll be notified when they are. I thank you all for being here this evening and uh, feel free to come to our next board meeting, which is next Tuesday. And we'll keep you apprised as to when these items are on the agenda. Thank you all.
Thank you.